When that loads up and it's streaming to YouTube.
And you can, don't, don't close it down, just lower it down.
Okay. Good time you said that, because you know what other.
And then we will make sure the video, I mean, the audio here is turned down.
Okay, why?
Because of your back feed.
Oh.
See, see how this already coming through?
Don't, don't close it down, it's slower.
So now. Now we're ready. Four people in order to, ready to join. Traylor. Beth.
Rhonda, did you get her? That's our.
Hello. Hello, Mayor.
Hi.
Now, when we, when you actually start, resume recording right there.
You're recording now?
No, but right there, push that button there and you can start recording, right here.
Oh, okay. Now, you're gonna have it too?
Yes.
Okay. We're going, we got a little business to take care of before we open the meeting, before we get to the audit presentation. Let you in, wow. Okay. Can y'all hear me?
It's from where?
I'm muted.
Can you hear me, David? You're not in? I thought I let, oh, you're joining, okay. One, two, three, four.
There I am, now I'm in.
Can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Beth? Jayla?
Yes.
Y'all hear me? Okay. Alrighty. I think I got everybody in that's up here.
Is Beth not on here?
Yeah, Beth's up there. And.
I'm here.
Okay.
You did that right, Beth? Did you mute?
Yes.
Okay. I just made sure I don't hit the wrong button here.
Yeah, no, I just stayed muted until.
Okay, I saw, I saw Rhonda's, I saw Rhonda's come on and then yours, and I thought I was good.
Yeah, I've got fourteen month out in here, so you may hear some things in the background, so I'm gonna try to stay muted unless you need to hear from.
Alright. Okay. Alrighty. I'm echoing in here. Am I too loud? Okay, alright. Call them. And. We will open with an invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of life, we thank you for your watch, care, and guidance over each and every one of us. Heavenly Father, we lift up the city and of course this state and this nation, Heavenly Father. At these some trying times, Heavenly Father, we ask you to put compromise in all our hearts and understanding. Lift up the ones in this community may be sick, or maybe in need, Heavenly Father, that, that the sickness will be healed, Heavenly Father, and their, and their needs can be met. Bless the City Council. And, and their work and their endeavors, and help each and every one of us to do what's the best for the citizens at hand. The same as we ask in Jesus' name, amen. We'll do the pledge. You guys see the flag? Get my belly out of the way, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Rhonda Smith?
Present.
Karen Curl?
Here.
Nathan Grace?
Hope. I got, I had, am I?
David here.
My bad.
Here.
Beth French?
Here.
I had to sneak in while I wasn't looking.
Chris Wimmer? Okay.
Chris is here.
Hello?
I miss Nathan and Chris, okay. Nathan, you here? Oh, there you are. Okay. Okay. Our first order of business will be to fill an empty council seat. Have one letter of intent to become a councilman. This young lady, I'm very pleased that she's interested. I hope all of y'all got a letter, do you think I need to read this letter into the minutes for any reason? If not, I'll just, you know, offer Jayla and. To you for consideration for the council seat, Jayla Gish. And if y'all got any questions for, unmute.
I personally don't have any questions, so I've kind of known her.
Okay.
For a lot, uh, but since it's on the letter, I mean, I will make a motion to accept her letter of intent.
Okay, good idea. There's a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Rhonda, to accept the letter of intent, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, pose like sign. Okay. Now we've accepted her letter, I'll entertain a motion to, to appoint Jayla to the vacant City Council seat.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. David second. Again, all in favor. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please. Okay, Jayla, welcome to the Carden City Council. And I look forward to getting together, you know, we'll try to get you some, you know, information and stuff, I think we even might have a, have stuff for you tonight, so. Of course, next thing is swearing in, I was about to let that slip by. So now I'm gonna swear you into the council seat. You see, see the flag? I'll read this, and then all you'll have to do at the end of it, say, say aye to. Know ye that this day came, Jayla Gish, who was by me duly sworn to the, the oath of office of the Carden City Council, being administered the oath required of section 228 of the Constitution of Kentucky, in words as follows. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as I continue a citizen thereof. Then that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability, the office effort said according to law, and I do further solemnly swear, that since the adoption of the present constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, nor out of it, nor have I accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Okay. Well, welcome, congratulations, we're glad to have you.
Congratulations.
And. We'll continue, you are a, from this point on, you're a voting member, you can vote yea, nay, or abstain, ever how you feel on a issue that comes up here tonight, so. And I'll get this printed up and filed at the courthouse, this is your oath of office, so.
Okay.
And get it ready for you. Okay, our next order of business is the minutes from the December seventeen meeting.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm fine with it.
Rhonda?
I'm good.
Beth?
I'm good.
Is Nathan on here?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yep. Okay, I make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
Who second?
I did.
Oh, okay, I wasn't looking.
Beth second.
Beth seconded. Karen made the motion, Beth seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose like sign, okay. Next is our bills.
I have a question on the visa bill. I've got page one and page three, but I don't have pages two and four of it.
Yeah, mine was same way.
Mine as well.
And I've got one and four.
And then I've got, and then on the back of it, it's three of four.
Two.
I mean, I just didn't know why.
Yeah, there's nothing on the back.
Yeah, I didn't know why two and four was, was omitted, I didn't, I mean, I don't know. Which, I mean, I see it's copied front and back, so I didn't know, maybe there was a mix up on that, maybe it didn't get copied.
It sure could have.
But. You would think though, if it was gonna be front and back, it'd be one and two and a three and four, but some, I, I've just got one of four and three of four, yeah.
I've got, yeah, page one and page three.
Yep.
I didn't, I missed that, I didn't see that. On the, the two pages of medicine didn't have anything on it? Yeah. She's gonna bring me page two and page four, I, I think it's, doesn't have the money information on it anyway.
Okay. I just didn't know what was on it.
I didn't either.
I mean, since it was copied like one of four and then three of four, it was just kind of odd, so I didn't know if it was left out by mistake, or if it was just like.
While she's getting that, Ted, I just got a quick question on the Woodard.
Okay, yes.
What do we have done?
Oh, that was the, with the cares money, that was putting a Remy halo in the city office.
Okay, that, that's cares.
Uh, yes.
I have a question about. That invoice too, while you were.
Was that eight hundred and some dollars you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question about that same invoice, uh, on my front page, it's got the invoice number at the top, and it says the balance due was thirty-two dollars, and then on the back, I've got two separate invoices, but if you look the second invoice, it says subtotal of eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, but the only invoice which I've got is for thirty-two, but it's the same invoice number.
I was still looking at the visa.
No, that's okay, I mean, I was just asking what we were doing there.
I don't know, I don't know if you can see this, but this is what was on the back, all the.
Okay. But on the, on the Woodard statement, it's the invoice five-two-five-three-nine-seven-nine, and it shows like a charge of thirty-two dollars, which is for the filter, which is on the opposite side, but then it says the subtotal is for eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and it's the same invoice on the reverse side, right? Five-two-three-six-nine, yeah, and. So what's the eight hundred and ninety-seven for? I mean, I know it was cares money, but I just didn't know, because I don't have an invoice for it.
Eight hundred and sixty-five was for the cares, and thirty-two dollars is for filters, is what it was.
No, but Karen, that's two separate invoices, it's not the same number. And I've only got.
Different times, but I ain't found it yet.
The last four numbers are different, were the invoices?
Right, one six nine seven nine, and one is nine seven eight three.
Right, I'm just saying, on the opposite side of it, it's two separate invoices, but I only have, I'm only seeing one invoice for the thirty-two dollars.
Right.
That was my question, because I don't have the invoice.
And is that for? Is that Woodard Heating and Air?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I don't even have that.
Okay, well, I don't know, Rhonda, but I'm gonna hold this up, can you?
Yeah, this one is for the filters. Thirty-two dollars, and then on the back, I guess they added that to the. Yeah, they added it to that, I guess they sent one bill, or. I didn't even send one bill. Okay. Okay. Okay.
But I mean, like I said, I see where the one invoice is for thirty-two dollars, and I mean, I see where the balance owed is eight ninety-seven, I just don't have an invoice for the five-two-three-eight-nine-seven-eight-three, I just didn't know, and it was originally eight hundred and sixty-five.
Right, I don't have an invoice for that invoice, that number either.
I just got a billing statement, and then on the back of that page, I had an invoice thirty-two dollars, I don't have for the eight hundred and sixty-five, and I was just, I mean, if it's cares money, I was just curious as to what we used it for.
Yeah, that was for that Remy halo, and I know it had a.
Okay.
Had a ticket. But.
And what you may have, I just didn't know, because I don't have an invoice, so I was just asking.
Didn't we have that on the December?
I think, yeah.
When we first applied for.
I went and picked up the filters, that's the reason we got this. Feed, I guess.
The twenty. That was the twenty-three.
That is the correct price there, eight, eight sixty-five and then thirty-two.
Which is fine, I just, like I said, I didn't know what that was for.
It's really, I've found personally, that it's cheaper to buy the filters there than it is some of these other, I'm talking a good filter, not a.
Right.
Not what I have used in old days.
On this, and which I'm asking because, you know, this is my first council meeting, so I'm not aware of all of our accounts or credit accounts. On the CNH, it's for the agri-power, is that like, a credit account that we have with that business? Because it says like a minimum payment due, I just, is you know, like John Dear Financial is through Royal King, I didn't know if this was a credit account that we had through H&R Agri Power.
No, it's usually just transact, H and R, that's H and R, that's down in warranty, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I mean, what I'm talking about is it says, I think it's CNH, and it says capital productivity plus account statement, and it's got the H and R agri-power charge on it for the five thirty-five twenty-two, and then it says like minimum payment due is ten dollars, so I was just wondering if that was a, kind of like a credit account, like the financial, John Dear Financial is to Royal King.
That's their credit account.
That's what I like, because it's the minimum payment, so, okay, well, let me, I just didn't, I'm trying to make note of all this stuff.
Okay, now, I'm lost. Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
That is. But it's paid, you know.
Yeah, I just didn't, like I said, this is my first council meeting, and I just didn't know what accounts we had where, so I'm just trying to make sure.
The post office service has caused us a little bit of.
Yeah.
Some of these have been getting paid in time. Not, I don't mean late payments, I just mean.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
On the Parks and Recreation Bank account, looks like there was a check on twelve sixteen, it looked like it was check number one twenty-two to AB Chandler PTA, what was that for?
Reimbursement for they, they rented the building.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't seen it, but how much was it?
Fifty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
So that was there?
Yeah.
Okay, do we not use Pitney Bowls anymore for mailing or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
We've been getting wet, uh, we've got stamped, I hope I'm saying that right, stamp in the most.
Yeah, I've seen that, and I just, because I know one time, it was, you know, Pitney Bowls, and you just ran it through, so I'm just trying to make sure I know where things at.
Ted, the hand sanitizer and. Shoot, what else was it? The school's in, was that paid with cares money also?
What page is that? Hand sanitizers were, for sure.
And the dispenser and the stand.
Spencer and the stands and the, and the hand sanitizer, it was all paid together.
Okay, so that's all cares money, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I thought so, and the thresholds, is that due to the fact of the new flooring?
Yeah, yeah, we, we had to get, they were supposed to have been done with the flooring, but the person that they had got to do it didn't.
Got you.
They had to come back and put them in. And while we're talking on, you know, I like, I like where you're looking at this, we have a, you know, we have more cares money spent, mask and stuff that we're intending to be able to hand out, you know, to citizens. And to deal with this company, we had to send a certified check to them. To, uh, for them, and that's, I know it's over five thousand dollars, but the check has not made it there, that's when I was kind of making a reference to the postal service, the check hasn't made it to that company. So they're processing an order anyway, because we, you know, but, but they haven't made it. That's what they asked for, it was a certified check, so I think we talked about that in the meeting or somewhere, and, but anyway, I wanted to let you know, sometime or another, that's gonna show up, or we're gonna have to stop paying it on it and do it a different way, but. I know what we was talking about, our credit card, you know, wouldn't cover it, because we don't have that high, but, and, and I don't want it, so I don't want it to be that high, so. But that's what I think I mentioned, okay, I'm, I'm through, Tom.
Brad, that, I guess it's a twelve month subscription, is that like our IT support and stuff? Is that who this uses? It's a, it looks like it's a yearly contract for three PCs, I'm assuming city clerk, sewer clerk, and the mayors for IT support maybe?
Probably, but, um.
It's, uh, I mean, it's on a, it's for a hundred and eighteen eighty-nine, it's a.
It may be.
Like on letterhead.
Security Viper, okay, we've got some, it's something to do with the tech support security.
Okay.
Okay.
I just didn't know that too, the city would use, I'm just trying to, like I said.
Grant is who we use for most.
Right.
And David here, and of course David don't charge anything. My other tech support. Might give him ideas.
I make a, make me pay the bills.
I do have another question, it's, uh, it looks like it might be for copies, maybe black and white copies, color copies or something, um, it's Lang, L-A-N-G.
Lang?
Maybe.
That's our.
It's for a hundred.
That's our copier.
Okay, so. Right?
Let's copy this one.
Okay, so. So business equipment. They no longer handle that, like they don't.
No, this copying machine came, was donated to us by P and Z and Lang, is that right, Lang is who serviced it?
Okay. I think that's all my questions, once anyone else has it.
Okay, anybody else?
Motion's already been presented.
Oh, has it? I hadn't, I didn't hear it.
Motion to pay the bills.
Huh?
Motion to pay the bills, please.
Okay, thank you, I hadn't heard, I didn't hear. Is there a second?
I'll second.
David second. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
No. No.
Okay. Alrighty, we got one, one, one no. Okay. Alright, our next order of business is. Our audit presentation by Malcolm Neal. I hope you all have that with you.
Yeah.
Alright, Malcolm, I'll turn it over to you, you got, are you muted? I didn't.
There we go, clicked enough, but I finally figured out which one could unmute me, I'm sorry there, I'm gonna share my screen, uh, can someone enable the screen sharing, please?
What? Oh, oh, okay, I gotta find it. Up here at the top, recording pause, I gotta be careful, Malcolm, I'll go clicking stuff and we'll all go off. Alright, screen share, you ready?
I'm ready when you are.
Alright, there, there it is. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, it says host disabled participants screen sharing there, Mayor.
I disabled it?
I think you disabled it.
Oh, gosh. Alright, now.
Probably disabled to start with, and there may be down there, Mayor.
There's a share down here, should I hit it?
You click on it, it may give you an option to allow others to share, I don't think you wanna share your screen, you wanna allow Mac to share his screen.
Well, David, you better come in here for, I'm losing everybody here. I've cut it, I've cut this meeting in half already.
Don't feel bad, I haven't done the same thing with this, I'm still on the air.
Yep, I'm down, I'm down to one, two, three, four people, so. Oh, okay, shouldn't have done that, I didn't hit that though. I hit, that's what I, alright, thank you, at least we got that back now. That's what I hit and started all this. That's what I hit and started all this.
I mean, I, I suppose it could be that. In the meeting setup, it may have been disabled altogether. I know that you can either select. Allow people to share screens, don't allow people to share screens, or host can.
I think he's got, I think he's got it now, Chris.
There you go.
Yeah.
Did everybody see that okay now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm going to go.
I don't know.
Can everybody hear me?
I don't want it right now. Alright, I'll leave well enough alone. I won't touch nothing.
Don't feel bad, Mayor. I have my fumbled around this thing too still, so.
I'm quite pitiful.
But anyway, uh, I think everybody received the audit reports and I'm gonna go through there. I could keep you here until midnight tonight. I know you've got other things to do rather than listen to me. But uh. I'm working, but here we go. Uh, just to go through the audit process, we start out, we do a risk assessment. We look at the system documentation. As far as how you process transactions, we document all that in a flow chart. And then we assess risk based on the effectiveness of your procedures and controls in place. And part of our risk assessment, we have to look at external factors. As far as regulatory environment, how legislation in Frankfurt, for instance, could impact the financials. Uh, the economic climate, you know, what's the local economy like that it could impact your tax base? And, and then other unique factors. So we take kind of a holistic approach, for lack of a better adjective there. Uh, then we go through and do a risk assessment, look at the control environment, the control activities, which are your policies and procedures. And the quality of the information you get. And then the big factor there, you see the big chunk of that diagram is monitoring how well you as a council monitor. All your financial transactions. And I can tell you, I was very impressed while I was sitting there, uh, as you scrutinized all the bills and held, held the mayor's feet to the fire there. Uh, just some of the highlights there. You have a clean opinion on your financial statements, which means everything was in good order. Uh, your net position increased uh about a hundred and three thousand. Uh, the general fund, fund balance increased thirty-eight thousand. And then the sewer increased about seventeen thousand. So you're trending upwards. And then one of the things about your general fund, you have enough fund balance and liquid assets to operate the city for two hundred and ninety-seven days if you were to shut everything down. And I'll show you a diagram later that explains that. But typically as a rule of thumb, you want to have ninety days of expenditures. So your general fund's very healthy. Uh, in the financials, uh, I'll go through this as your statement of net position, which kind of shows everything, all your assets and debt. Uh, you can see your totals. You have a total assets of one point nine million as of the end of the year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, if you look over under the totals, you have total liabilities of five hundred and thirty-five thousand. And a net position or net worth of the city of uh one point four million. So you're in very good financial shape. Uh, your revenues and expenses for the year in the general fund. Uh, as I alluded to earlier, your revenues exceeded your budget by sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, your total expenditures exceeded your budget by forty-five thousand. That's due to the, the extra funds you, you receive from grants up there. If you look at fifty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And net net, uh, your expenses after transfers in and out, uh, you had a net change in your fund balance of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The M R A fund had revenues of uh thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen and expenditures of thirty thousand three thirty-six. So you had a decrease. And fund balance of sixteen thousand five hundred and nineteen, dropping it from twenty-eight thousand to eleven thousand five hundred. Again, that was uh in line with budget. The sewer fund, uh, the revenues are relatively consistent with the prior year, as are the expenses. You had an income before transfers of thirty thousand, after transfers out, net of thirteen. You had a change in net position or net income, as we say in the for-profit sector, of uh seventeen thousand dollars. And just a summary of where your revenue comes from and your governmental funds, which is your M R A and your uh general fund. Uh, roughly forty-nine percent of that uh comes from your, your insurance tax. You can see your property taxes are eleven percent. Other, which uh this year you had about a twenty-two thousand dollar uh insurance recovery. I believe from the tornado. So you had other income of about ten percent this year and your franchise fees are six percent. And then nineteen percent of your total governmental revenues was the uh, the, the grant you received for uh street improvements. Conversely, on the expenditure side, you can see the bulk of your expenditure, general government, the services you provide to the public. And you get twenty-three percent of that was capital expenditures. You spent a hundred percent of the grants you received. And uh, you see the, the rest of that uh parks and streets and uh public support there, the other minor stats. Uh, your cash and investment trend and the governmental fund, you can see from two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty. Uh, you ended the year, June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen with fifty-four thousand two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And conversely, if you look at two thousand and twenty. Uh, you, you have in your governmental funds, which is the M R A and the general fund, a hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. In there. So you're trending upwards as far as your cash is concerned. Uh, if you look at your governmental revenues over the past three years. You can see there, everything's been relatively consistent uh with your intergovernmental increase. Uh, in twenty twenty, again, that's due to the receipt of the fifty-four thousand, roughly fifty-five thousand dollar grant you received. And your taxes spiked last year. Uh, there was an unusual item in there in the insurance tax where I think a company had not paid a previous year's payment that showed up in there. So, and then your other spikes, as you can see out there with the twenty-six eight forty-one, twenty-two thousand of that was your insurance recovery. Uh, the sewer fund also, cash balances were steady from two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. And due to your having a net income this year, they increased uh, you have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in cash. Uh, you can see the revenue, you had a rate increase there for twenty twenty. So it, your revenues went up about twenty-four thousand over the previous two years. And your general fund balance, as I said, it correlates to your cash balances increased from a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight twenty-two. And uh, eight eighty-two, excuse me, in two thousand and eighteen to a hundred and ninety-seven eight forty-eight. So you're up about seventy uh six thousand dollars over the two-year period where you are at the end of twenty twenty. And this is what I was alluding to earlier. Uh, a rule of thumb, the Governmental Finance Officers Association recommends that you keep at least ninety days reserve in your fund balance. Uh, you can see you've exceeded that the last three years and you have uh about, you went from two hundred and seven, seven uh days expenses in your fund balance last year, two hundred and ninety-seven. So basically for a small municipality, you're in very good financial shape. Uh, we have a compliance report in the, the findings, uh, twenty twenty oh one and twenty twenty oh two. Those are unavoidable. It's not cost beneficial to hire people. To uh do your accounting in a small municipality and just to segregate duties. So you mitigate that risk. You have insurance that would cover you if there ever was a defalcation. Now, the one finding we do need to discuss is twenty twenty oh three, the collateralization of deposits. Uh, in the past, it has been a problem because you've been covered. F D I C covers you first of all collectively. It's a city up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But due to the improved financial condition of the city, you've exceeded the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit. So Kentucky law requires you to have the bank, your depository, Field and Main, uh pledge securities against those excess deposits. And that's just a matter of looking at your months where you anticipate having the highest uh cash balances. Typically, that's when you collect your property taxes in November and December. And just having the bank uh raise the collateralization or the security pledge threshold to whatever your highest cash balance was. So that, that's not a big deal. If you were dealing with a bank that was marginally, uh, you know, capitalized and not in good solid financial shape. Uh, it was something to worry about. The Field and Main's very strong. Uh, I think Chris can attest to that. Uh, having his father, former presence on the board, but uh, that's, that's just a matter, a matter of thing you need to address at some point to, to be in compliance with Kentucky law.
Is there a, how will we know?
You just have to, Mayor, you just have to monitor your cash balances at the end of each month. And you need anything in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when you. For instance, if you were three hundred thousand, you'd need the bank to play fifty thousand in securities or they could get you a letter of federal home loan bank.
So when that happens, we need to contact Field and Main at.
Right, and if you talk to, alright, yes. So if you talk to someone in customer relations, they can take care of that for you. But that's not a problem you've had in the past because you haven't been fortunate enough to have enough cash on hand.
Okay.
If you notice, it's your cash has gone up substantially over the last three years. And that's not uncommon to happen in a small municipality. It's nothing to be alarmed about, but, but to be in compliance with Kentucky law, it is something you need to address. And with that, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
I have a question. Uh. It says that the city of Corning, Kentucky during the year ended twenty thirty, twenty twenty had line item expenditures in excess of a budgeted amount of forty-six thousand, the general fund. And fifteen thousand in the M R A.
Right, and you, you, you had reserves to cover those excesses. So had you not had reserves and you went into a deficit position, that would be a problem. But we're required, we're required to disclose that in the notes to the financial statements.
Right, uh, I just was a little curious as to where the excess happened. I didn't know if anyone had that. I mean, was it one just specific line item or is it several or?
Uh, it was due to your capital expenditures. You had a grant uh fifty-five thousand dollars and you expended on the other side of the, you spent all that fifty-five thousand dollars on street improvements.
I think we added thirty. We actually spent eighty, something about.
Right, you used, used thirty of that out of your reserves.
M R A, yeah.
But in the event that that is, would be the case, uh. I mean, would, this might be a question for Chris and Ted. Uh, would, would the council not need to come back and like amend the ordinance and prepare? Like amend the budget if we're gonna have that happen?
Well, I. Possibility there. I, I don't know. What do you think, Chris?
I.
I was thinking that we had that in the budget though.
Because I don't know, I haven't seen last year's budget, so I didn't know. That's why I was asking.
It was grant money. I'm thinking that, Chris.
Yeah, I, I have to look at it. I don't, I don't have all the data in front of me. I know.
I know we figured the project in because of that money.
Right. I, I have to look at it. I know if it was grant money in, grant money out, I mean, do, do you um need to? Provide the, I mean, obviously you budget for your normal expenditures and then you receive a grant and you spend more. Do you need to revise the budget or it's grant in, grant out? But that's, that's something. I, I'd have to look at that to see.
Yeah, yeah, Chris, you could find that in K R S ninety-one dot O three O A, I believe that is.
Right.
Ah, you got me back. We're not screen sharing anymore, Malcolm. Everybody's back up.
Listen next to.
No, I don't think you need to. You're through with that one. Y'all that have questions.
Oh, yeah.
That's, we'll just have to find out. Beth, I don't know.
Oh, that's, I mean, I, just for future reference, if that would ever come up, again, I just didn't.
I just thought we started the budget on. We knew that money was coming. I thought while we prepared a budget, I was thinking maybe.
And you may have, like I said, I what, I don't know, I haven't seen the budget. I didn't know. Just, just I guess kind of for future reference, just to have the knowledge if that would happen again.
Sure.
Uh. Okay, and then uh. There's a note in here that says. The city should have at least one staff member with training and expertise to properly prepare the financial statements in notes to the financial statement.
Right, those are the comments we're required to put in there because it's uh when you don't have a lack of segregation of duties. For instance, uh, my office, everything's segregated. I've got two hundred and fifty staff. But you only have three staff, so it's not cost beneficial to have, spend the money to hire staff to segregate duties. So you mitigate that risk, as I said earlier, with insurance.
But, okay, so just to clear it up, it's not that the accounting at the city is, is not in order that she's.
No, 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 no. That's just something, if you took any small municipality across Kentucky, you'd found the same comments in there. We're, we're required to put in there.
I think it's been in every budget, every audit, I mean, just about.
I think that's the only questions I have. Unless anybody else has.
Thank you, your questions. Any others? Jayla, you got all that squared away, don't you?
More than you know.
Uh, good, good, good.
I deal with a lot at work.
Alright, good. And you might, you're gonna be, be some help there. Is there any uh, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
Okay, print a motion.
Second it.
Second it. Okay. I think we can do all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, like so. So they, this, you gotta get ready to send it on to D L G, correct?
That's correct. It goes to D L G after this and uh. To file it there. It'll be online if anyone wants to see it.
Alright, sounds good. I had all this neat and orderly. Now I got, got tied up here. Alright. Alright, next order of business, and I've hit them from. Got the second reading of the ordinance that we passed last. Last council meeting, the one for uh. Twenty twenty point O six. The council and mayor's stipend. The amount. So I get, I have to read that again, don't I? Uh, city of Corning, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty dash O six. An ordinance setting forth the compensation rate for the mayor and city council in accordance with K R S eighty-three A point O seven O one. Whereas eighty-three A point O seven O one of the Kentucky revised statutes requires that the legislative body of each city shall fix the compensation of every elected. City officer no later than the first Monday in May in the year in which the officer is elected. Whereas the city council of Corning, Kentucky desires to adopt an ordinance setting forth the compensation of the offices of mayor and the city council beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-three. Because those dates would come in if we was changing something for the next go-around, but uh. So I'll entertain a motion if you want to carry this on.
I actually uh don't have the ordinance. Not have any of them.
Okay.
But I mean.
I don't know. I thought I'd give you mine Tuesday, but I may have, I may have lost it.
Maybe I did.
Okay. Do you want to carry this on or?
I mean.
I can't hear you. Karen.
I mean, now this, this ordinance is just for the mayor and elected officials, right?
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, isn't it pretty well governed by K R S two on what you can't do and can do?
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah.
You, if you wanted to raise, you would have to.
Right. Yeah.
You have to do it prior to election, like it's.
We just have to adopt the ordinance, right? We just have to adopt an ordinance. Well, I mean, I'll make a motion to, um, adopt that ordinance.
And I don't think this is any change in what your old ordinance has had. It's just.
I think it's just, we found out we need to do this every year. So something we haven't done, so we need to annually.
I think. I don't know if you have to do this one every year. I think that you ought to do the compensation one for employees.
Okay. All right. We've got some adjustments to that. Okay.
I'll second.
Is there a second or motion? Okay. Beth made the motion. Rhonda's seconded. Well, does roll call vote?
Yes. Yes.
Did I moody? Oh, she's beaten. Oh.
Nathan Grace. David here.
Yes.
Beth Branch.
Yes.
Jayla Kish.
Yes.
Okay. All right. This ordinance has passed. Now we have tabled this 20. 20 dash seven. This was to do with setting compensation or starting salaries or something for. Non-elected officials, city clerk, billing clerk, city maintenance and temporary employees. And, uh, I know we talked about it, you know, Tuesday, but we never did really set for sure. I know we're going to just set one price and not a range. But, uh, I haven't written that down.
Well, that was just a workshop, Ted. That's why we didn't.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to, if you coming out of that, if you had ideas of what you wanted here or you want to leave it table till you're decided or. Cause that was a holdup was the, uh. Wages. Wage range.
Well, one thing we talked about was we wanted to start, didn't want to start anybody less than $10 an hour.
I remember that.
And then two. We wanted to stick with that and then. Give the raises based on your recommendations with a positive performance evaluation. And then we would decide every year what percentage that would be.
Okay. On raises. And, uh. We also said if we was going to hire somebody and the wage was going to be more than the $10.
Right. That would be with your recommendation and council approval.
Council approval. Yeah. So those were, that were, that needs to be in it. Right?
Right. But that pay scale, we didn't. We didn't get a sale.
You didn't want to range, so you just wanted a minimum of 10 from all of them. Is that correct? Have you got that, Chris? I think all the way up and down line would be $10 minimum. We need to put that, um, with council approval in there somewhere. I'm trying to find out where. All right, where it is. All right, Chris, uh, if we change this, uh, exhibit A and put $10. Minimum wage all the way up and down. And not have a range. I mean, that's not actually spelled out in here. It's on this page.
Right. I'm trying to find it in here. I can take a look at it.
And I guess we talked about the. Increases. Where would we put that?
Well, I mean, what, what the council supposed, what, what traditionally is done is the range for each position. You know, for each employee, it's for each position. The rationale behind that, I mean, you're, you're a small city. You have. A small number of employees, but you know, some places have more than one person in the same positions. That's why you would have a range and to make sure that. Employees are treated equally and fairly, you have a range so that there's not. An allegation that somebody was paid different for different reasons, because it was all set up in the ordinance to begin with. I don't know about what you're, what you're talking about, the. Council approval would be, are you saying it would show minimum and any, any more than that would be approved by council? Is that?
That's the way we were discussing it. Yes.
I mean, I, I think we could do that.
Okay.
I, I have to look at the paper to see where that would go.
Okay. So we probably should leave this table. Have we discussed everything that needs to be discussed, guys? Folks. Council.
I don't know if this falls in with this topic, um, cause I know we talked about it at the workshop too. Um, we had talked about, um, going over the city's like employee handbook to see if anything needed to be updated or. I didn't know. I mean, cause.
So I have the handbook. We have reviewed it. Uh, made some suggested changes. This has been, we've had it for a little bit. We, with COVID and everything, we kind of got away from it. I actually thought maybe we had sent it back. So I have it. So what I told Charlene I would do is. Uh, I can get you the current handbook with the suggested changes that we had. And then we could talk about further changes and then finalize it, if that makes sense. But that would be. One way to do it. I mean, because what we did is we hadn't been looked at, I think since 2016, but I don't know who would have, you know, I don't know the last time that it really been thoroughly reviewed. So I had one of our employment folks take a look at it. He suggested some updating on some things to get it compliant with, with a few things. Um, and then I know there's some other policies we've talked about, about time cards and other things that we need to make sure we get in there. But I can get it. We can get it out to everybody. So you guys can take a look at it and then maybe we can. Make some more changes and finalize it.
Chris, how many? How many pages is that handbook?
Hold on. I had it here just a second ago. I mean, it's kind of, it's got, it's got a few pages in it. Give me a second. I found it. It is. About 20. Some odd pages. 27, 28, 29 pages. Uh, as it is currently.
So is it too much? Maybe you could eat or it could be emailed to the council.
What I can do is, and I'm not sure I have everybody's email addresses. Maybe I do. But I, if I get those, then yeah, I can scan this. And I may already have it scanned in and I can email it to you. So what I could email you is the existing 2016 version. And then, uh. When I get, I'm going to go through the changes that we had and make sure that we got them all done. And then I can send you those. But at least you could start looking at what the, what the handbook was in 16, you know, what the current version is because we've not adopted any of the changes yet. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that was initially just while I was asking at the workshop because I didn't know when last time it had kind of been revamped or reviewed. Cause. You know, it had been a while. I just kind of thought the city would need to do that.
Current version says it was adopted March of 2016. I know that we did, I mean, I don't, I think we. I remember that. I don't think we did a thorough, you know, review of it. We just changed a couple of things, but, but we had, I had somebody actually go through it. And make sure. Things were compliant, that we were up to date on non-discrimination laws and everything else. And, uh, so there's some notes in here, some things that we need to. Fix. I can't remember why we didn't. This is all happening about last spring. So that's when we got, got off track on it. But, uh. Yeah, I'll do that. It out and then I'll send you guys in addition. It might be, I mean, I'll, I'll get this out as ASAP and then I can send you the changes. Uh, maybe early next week.
Okay. So is, um, this handbook, is it ones where like the employees will read and like the last page or somewhere around the last page, they usually sign it and agree to. The terms that are set forth for like either employment stuff. Does that have a page in there for that?
It's not, it's not in the book, but there's probably a form or something that we would have that. Somebody could sign acknowledging that they've been given it or that they've seen it.
Right. That's right. Uh, because I know, I mean, I wasn't. On the council, I wasn't at the meeting. I've just kind of heard. Um, I know that there was questions about time cards as far as writing in and out or whatever. So. Is that one of the things that would be addressed, like part of the revisions?
It's one of the things I know we've talked about and I know that the council, some, we have some desire to change, to put some provisions in there. So I, I don't know that that's something that we changed last, you know, the things I'm talking about were more just general updates. Definitely if there's policy changes, that's, I guess what I was suggesting is if you get it out. And then if there are, you know, while we're looking at it, if there are policy changes that we want to incorporate. Then that would be a good time to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
So we should table this again until we get the employee manual. I mean, I know they're not going to be tied in the same thing, but. Does that sound good? And try to write the ordinance where it reflects the minimum wa, minimum salary.
I can, I can go ahead and get the ordinance. I've got it pulled up here. So I can go ahead and get. It changed with a minimum wage of 10. And maybe a notation at the bottom of that exhibit A suggests. Actual wages to be. Determined by council.
Okay. Yeah. Well, that's kind of when you hired somebody in it and they, you want to give them more money than that, that's where we said we'd bring it to the council for council approval.
Right. Okay.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Cause I think what, what normally happens on these and you would have the range and then the administration of the city could hire folks in. And, and within that range without having to bring, because it's already been approved. So what I'm hearing is what you'd like to do is to set the minimum and then he think above that.
Yeah.
That's there.
Okay. And so I need a motion to table this again. I assume a table till the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay. Rhonda. Sure. Second.
I'll second it.
David. Call in favor, signify by saying aye. Likes that. Okay. Thank you. All righty. Thank you, Chris. All right. We'll go. Let's see here. Going into agenda, next order of business, the garage door is ordered. Don't have a completion date. I don't think they got it yet, but we have talked to them and, uh. So, uh, I think we've got a good price for that door. Uh, you know, good. Quote. So we should hear from them in a few weeks. Uh, Beth, the reason for the door is so we can move the dump truck from the big garage up to. The maintenance office. We had to raise the. The entrance in there to get, get the dump truck in there. Wasn't tall enough. And we're intending to put a tanker truck down there. In the big building coming from the fire department, their old one, when, when they replace it. So this little bit off might be next fall or something. That's a purpose for the garage. Plus the other ones about to really fall down anyway. So.
Right.
It'd be a good deal. All right. And the new tires are on the service truck, rear tires. You got them at Raven. And then we got, uh, our. Property tax and sewer collect, GovCollect is doing an upgrade on the server and they're kind of holding us up right now. They're getting it prepared for online payments. And, uh. That's about all Ted knows and, uh. But, uh. We're waiting for, right now we're waiting for somebody, one of the other techs to get in here and fix. Get the computers, uh, working together. Is there any questions about that? And I, as long as you don't ask me, expect any technical answers. All right. Property tax and I've says here the total unpaid, but I don't have that on here. Charlene, you want to? Throw in the. Huh? Yeah. Where? Where at? In. In the, in the bills. Oh, now did he? Okay. Is what you're talking about? Oh, okay. That looks better. All right. So our property tax, I guess in the transaction journal in the, uh, financial page, that's where that was. From. Actually probably shoveled it, might have shoveled it right in amongst. That's why I lost it, but. Anyway, it shows that the amount billed for our property tax is 30,625 77. Payment so far, 24,109. Oh, three. So there's an outstanding or delinquent taxes of 6,706 24. If that makes sense.
So how many tax bills do we send out?
Good lord. Was it 409? I didn't see it. 403? That time I can't see it. Well, I'm not seeing it, but they say it's 403. It ought to be on this sheet. I assume you've seen it on this transaction journal sheet. Left hand side. Oh, good gosh. Right out. Right out in the open. Can you see that? Of course, this is not mine. Mine didn't color it either. That's what it looks like. It was at the top of your.
Okay.
Myself with mine right amongst. Okay. So 403 tax bills, Rhonda.
Okay.
Okay, Ted, one more time. And how many are outstanding?
Uh, $6,706 and 24 outstanding property tax.
But you don't have that broke down into how many act. But you don't have that broke down into how many actual bills out of the four hundred and three?
Me? Uh, no.
Charlie?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, you'd have to dig all that out to find out who, who or what, is that what you're asking? Charlotte, I mean. Don't show each individual that's not paid.
Yes, that's what I was wanting to know is how many? How many actual? Taxes have not been paid, not dollar amounts?
I'd be making a wrong statement probably, you have to pull that out manually. Charlene, so that's. That's what we do with the sewer thing, Katie pulls it out manually, so we know the delinquent, that don't just automatically. Gives you a total of what you're supposed to be.
I got you.
Don't tell you each individual unless you put it on the sheet. That's kind of next, is that, that answer?
We were just kind of wanting a percentage. Of a percentage paid.
Well, one of you mad, uh, one of you. Jayla, if you figure that out, the percentage, I'll give you those totals again. I mean, that's what I would say you would. You would figure it out by this. You want to know the percent, which way you want to know it?
The percentage paid.
Paid, okay.
Out of the four hundred and threes.
There would be twenty, oh, you mean, you're still wanting those numbers, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm not going to help you there. I was, thought she was wanting the percentage of the money that's come in.
No.
Have Jayla divide the. The twenty-four thousand by thirty thousand with the percentage.
Well, I don't think that, that would be accurate because, you know, everybody's property bill taxes.
Depends on who bought them and.
Yeah.
Who's homestead, you got homestead and that?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, Jayla. Alrighty. We just had to do some looking on, on the numbers of properties. See if we can find that, well, no, we can't, just doing it. Okay. All right, our next. Are you, is that all right? Are you through there? I mean, that's just more of a report, okay. The next is our sewer delinquent list, I've got to count on these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Hey Ted, we're at seventy-nine percent paid.
Okay, thank you. Oh, good, all right, sixty-nine homes are not paid yet, sixty-nine home, homes in town, that might not be. That won't include the lots and stuff like that, but the homes. And it's out of two hundred and seventy-four, I think is what our, that's what I do that DMR on. That many residents, that many bills a month.
Okay, so that's just the property that has actual, like, a residence on it, that's not?
She said homes, I think so, I believe that's what, that's what you meant, wasn't it, Charlene, homes?
Well, lots.
Uh-oh, no. Lots, homes, everything, just that, so it's two hundred, sixty-nine parcels? Okay, sixty-nine parcels, that's better, okay. Okay, is that more satisfying?
Yeah.
Thanks, Charlene, that was good. All right, now the sewer, what does it do with the other, gosh dang it. I don't need to move a piece of paper, anyway. This keeps running total of our delinquent list, we have, we have it listed in here with payment plans and. And y'all, y'all can be free to come by here and see it, this is not something I want to. You know, I don't want it in public, you know, I don't think this is a. At least what I've got here in public, because it's. Count numbers and blah, 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 you know, but.
Okay, I have one question.
Later, but, yeah.
We had six. Cut off in December. And seven agreements, the number of cutoffs is still December, so these people have been cut off. With water and sewer since December, correct?
Uh, correct, I think.
So are they residing in these residents where the water's being cut off?
I don't know.
Because we need to do something, that's illegal. They can't live there without.
Sewer and water.
Sewer and water.
Uh, don't know that any.
Chris, where at? There you. Can they legally live there, Chris?
Um, I mean, you know, I don't. I haven't really considered that, we've cut, we shut them off, I mean, I, I guess we haven't, I don't know, probably not, I mean, it shouldn't be.
Hasn't, uh.
But it happens.
Been around and viewed some of these, haven't.
Yeah.
Jack has drove around and viewed some of these residents that are cut off, so I don't know of any that are there, it'd still be a lie, you know. I'm not intentional, but I don't, I'm not aware.
Okay. I can't hear Charlene, she's muted.
You're muted, what'd you say, all of them shut off or what?
All the ones that are cut off have landlords.
Okay.
None of them are really owners, they're landlords.
Rental property. But Jack hasn't seen any in the residents that he's checked, correct? I haven't checked any.
I mean, to your point, they shouldn't be renting them out, they should be getting the sewer back on.
Well, in some cases, our landlords are owed a whole lot of money.
Yeah.
From what I've been told, you know. We are too.
Yeah.
Some of these larger bill, well, right now, and it's actually, some of the higher ones have been paid. So I mean, I'm proud of the citizens, they've, we've helped direct people to get help. And that has worked on, you know, two or three or four instances. And some of the people have managed to. Come up with the money and pay it off, one of them was like five hundred and some dollars. And then. Then we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven that are doing the payment plan and are. Committed to it. And then some of these cut off down here, I don't remember the number, some of them were all the payment plan and, and broke it right off the bat, didn't, didn't pay. So.
Okay, so on the ones that are cut off. Um, are they like occurring like penalties and interest and late fees for every month that they're?
They weren't. They were not because there was no penalties or interest during that period.
Right, and I just didn't know since cutoffs had resumed, if they were still, you know, getting penalized or occurring an interest.
Uh, some are doing it, we're doing it right now with new cutoffs.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're trying to add any more salt to the wounds on this.
Right, and that's why I was kind of asking that, I mean, if they're cut off, obviously. They're struggling, I would assume they're struggling, but, so if we were just adding to that every month with additional penalties or something, I don't really know how. You're going to get ahead.
No, you're right.
I mean, I just. I mean, I just kind of like across the board, if everybody's going to get penalties and interest, I mean, it should be the same across the board.
Well, like it is, like these already shut off, there's no. New, you know, there's no new ratings or nothing like that, so we just kind of left it. And hoping. It heals itself again, that's the wrong word, but hoping it's, gets corrected or they find the help, you know, some of it. People wouldn't go, you know, and look, I mean, we can't do that, we can't go get. Implement this help, we can just direct them, anyway. A lot of folks are, they're coming up, you know, they are paying, but like, say I'm looking at some of these with payment plan, they were four months. Six months, and we keep them on here, but they are paying.
Right.
Payment plus the sewer bill, so they're, they're committed to doing what they're supposed to do. Now, we've got, up here, we've got some new ones that's just added to, two months is a cutoff, it just happened. But maybe, you know, cutoff is twenty-fifth, they may. You know, maybe cleared down to where there's not, you know, as many as, I think there's ten there.
Okay, so they're allowed to be two months behind before?
Yes, we quit, cut them off on first month, it was just.
Okay.
Cumberson on the office, seventy-five dollars as soon as you cut them off, you know, I tried to. And, and in most cases, it's worked until this COVID business come up and things just kept growing, but. I mean, don't work a hundred percent, no, but it does work better than trying to do it every month.
So then my next question is, if we're doing it for every two months, then do we need to amend our sewer ordinance to reflect that?
I don't know, I don't. I don't, I don't, uh. I mean, talk about the ordinance, we've been, we've been doing this two months for two or three years here and. It was mainly, you know, ease of.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm, I don't disagree with that, I just know that the last sewer ordinance that I can remember, it was. It wasn't a two. The last one that I remember, it could have been amended since then, but it just wasn't a two-month grace period, it was a month, but. There was a provision in there to, if someone was struggling or they were getting ready to be cut off, they could come to the council. And ask for some time, and in that ordinance, it stated that the council, with council approval, they could pay fifty percent that day. And then the other fifty percent seven days later, I'm not saying that's feasible for these times by no means, but I just didn't know if we needed to. Amend the ordinance to reflect what we're doing now.
Well, it's not a bad idea, might be something to look at, because I, I know we've amended the ordinance because we had a rate increase since you were on.
Right. Right.
But addressing that, I don't, I know we did, I'm sure we did address.
I mean, it's a simple amendment, if that's what it is, I just didn't know.
I'll dig it, we'll dig it out. And make a note of that.
I don't know, whether we amend the ordinance, we came up with an agreement. Where folks could get caught up over time, is that what you're talking about, I mean, that we?
Uh, no, I mean, what she's talking about is me extending this from one month to two months on the.
Oh.
On the cutoff.
Right.
Right, I mean, that's all we were talking about.
I mean, you're, you have an order, right, which I think is. There's some discretion there, I think. To do that, if.
It may be, I know we made a decision in the office to do it, and it's been at least. Two, two, maybe three.
Right, and that's why I say, it could have been amended and I just didn't know, but I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem with the two-month extension. Or, you know, going two months and getting cut off that way, especially with everything that's going on right now and so many people out of work, and a lot of people haven't even received unemployment benefits, so I don't have a problem with it, I just didn't know if. We needed to amend an ordinance to reflect that.
I'll look at it. We'll find out if, we'll look if we need to, or if we need to leave that discretion to the, you know, office or not. Okay, let's see. All right, I told you wrong, payment agreements is, was seven. The numbers are still cut off at six, which I did tell you that. Total outstanding amount was two thousand, two, that's on your, that's on your agenda there, I forgot, okay. I think over next, and let's, you got more to say on that? Just mention a DMR report, that's the, that's, that's a report that goes into the. Uh, Kentucky EPA, and it's to do with the sewer system, so. It's just something to tell them how much the flow is and all that, but it's come off, it's a three-month quarterly report. That's done, and you remember when I went to that school to get the certification, that's what that was for, so I could do that report.
Hey Ted, when you brought up the certification, are any of the, the maintenance man that we have right now, do they have certifications or training or anything?
For.
For like the sewer system or, you know, like how Joe used to be certified?
Well, see, that's what I got.
Okay.
I mean, that took, that's like, you've got to go down there, I went to Kentucky Lake and.
Right.
Stayed all week, and I don't know that any of them are interested in that certification, that's class one collection. Now. Find somebody. Yeah.
You have the certification and stuff, but if you were ill or you were on vacation or something, I didn't know if we needed to have a backup for some, you know.
Well, we've got Henderson that we can call, be honest with you, I mean, I don't have them set up. But we can call City of Henderson and they would help us with that. Now, in the future, you know, with the, this little quarterly report now, somebody's going to have to get the certification in order to. Do that report, even though if you saw the report, you know, you would. Well, you wouldn't be impressed with, you know, it's not that intricate, it's just the fact that that certification is what it takes to. Sign off on it, I mean, it's all it's asking is the amount of flow and the customer served and as long as you don't have any, you know, problems, whatever, but.
I didn't know if we could piggyback on the, with Henderson either, but since the, but since we can do that, then yeah.
Well, I've got a good rapport with Williams, and I know that I could, you know, get them to help. In a situation, if Jack and them need help and I was out of town or whatever. We could get it there, uh, there's, you know, when I first come here, there was a guy from Savory that was a mentor. To Joe.
Joe.
Poor Joe got his.
Right.
And I can do that too, I could be a mentor. I could be a mentor to Jack for that matter, but.
Right.
Uh, he had to be planning to go to that class to become, you know, certified, I don't know that Jack would want to or Randy either. It's, yeah, you've got a point there, as long as I keep it.
I mean, it's okay, it was just kind of a thought for future reference, if something would happen, like you were on vacation or something, but I didn't know we could.
But no, they can pretty well handle everything, there's not a problem unless it's got to do with this report business.
Right, okay, all right.
But we can call Henderson and I hadn't, you know, I don't. I even met the guy from Savory, but he was, I think he's a little older than me, I'm not so sure he's still in the business, but. I remember that, okay. All right, it looks like that's all I've got on the agenda. Let me follow it up, we got the ordinance to do, the employee manual, sewer use ordinance. Let me back out.
Hey Rhonda. And I don't know how, I mean, this might be a Chris thing too, but. Obviously, we can't discuss some matters over Zoom, right, because not everything is public, you know. So if we, okay, because we could meet with the, like, doing the little workshop for the handbook and stuff, right, and we could distance ourselves and that was okay. So would it be possible to have like a special called meeting? To where we just, you know, we convene? And then we go into a closed session and then we come out, reconvene and then just adjourn because that, you can only do what's on the. Agenda, right?
Yeah.
Right, because I know that Rhonda has got some. Concerns and things that she wants to talk about, but we can't really do that over Zoom.
Sure.
So kind of my question to Chris was, is that, is that okay to do it that way, like, if we treat it like a special called meeting? The only thing we put on the agenda is, you know, like a closed session, because it's not public record or however you want to state that, and then. After the closed session, can you come out, reconvene in the meeting, and then we just immediately adjourn, because that would be the only thing that's on the close or on the agenda?
I don't have any way that you could accomplish that on Zoom as a closed meeting, but you could definitely do it that way.
Well, see, I didn't, well, I had no idea how we were going to do, like, Zoom on a closed meeting.
Well, I've done executive sessions on Zoom or WebEx or other things. Where we just haven't invited the public and we just had a private. You know, meeting that was just ours.
Well, I mean, that's carried away, I just didn't even know if you could accomplish that on Zoom.
I didn't make butt in, but.
No, that's okay, I mean, I just.
Did your own Zoom and just had it, can you do it closed? Because we've got it going to Facebook, we'd have to.
What you would have to do is, and I have a Zoom account, so. What you would have to do, I think, is have a public Zoom like this. Then. Have a separate Zoom that you would, you know, pause this meeting. Everybody would convene in the other Zoom. Everybody would convene in the other Zoom or or meeting room if you did it that way and then come back. I mean, you could do.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's different here in Kentucky. In Kentucky, you have to, your executive sessions have to be. You have to leave the regular meeting for your executive session. We have. Separate executive sessions in Indiana, so we just start a new, you know, we just have a Zoom for that, but. Yeah, you could have a separate Zoom where you, everybody. Just pause this meeting, go to the other one and then come back. Or we could do it in person if that makes sense.
All right, so you. I have to talk to my tech guy here, make sure.
If I, if I sent, if we used my, like, we just used my Zoom account separately and I set up a separate meeting. You would be in this meeting and then. You would, we would pause, we would say, okay, we're going to. Recess this meeting for the moment to go into an executive session. You would all log into the other one. For that meeting, we complete that meeting, log out of that one, log into this one.
Go back to the.
Go back, yeah, this one may keep running.
That's what I'm worried about, if it keeps running.
Yeah, or you may be able to pause it completely. And I don't know, it's a good question. I'm saying. We may need to think about it a little bit, but we can come up with something. Or we could just get together. If we need to. At town, if it works and and. Have it, have it there or notice it for a larger room if you wanted to.
Right, which I mean, it doesn't matter to, what, whatever it's easy, it's, you know, like more convenient or easier. I don't care which way. I just know that. Uh. At some point, we need to have a special called meeting for the purpose of a closed session. Do you agree, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have to do, uh, get Chris and David to figure this out because I sure can't.
I'm sure David's going to figure it out already.
I can figure it out, yeah.
I'll work on it.
Okay.
Or we can just do it in person and maybe like go down to the fire department where we can spread out more.
Okay.
I'm fine with whatever. I just, y'all just let me know like day and time and where if we're going to do Zoom or if we're going to do in person. It does, I'm fine with whatever. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, but whatever we. Need to find the forums so that you guys can talk about what you want to talk about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
There's nothing else, I guess. Somebody moved to the, yeah, sure.
Uh, I know it's January and we haven't had it in the past two years. And I don't know that we will get to do it this year, but do we want to try to set a tentative date for the Easter egg hunt?
Boy, you are really.
Because, you know, we only, we only. Well, we only meet once a month and it can creep up on us and I don't like to, I like to be prepared.
You know, I haven't, uh, last year, we didn't, you know, we didn't do it, of course. We did almost set it up. And, uh. Uh, the, the church of lights. We haven't been meeting. To even, you know, what I mean, discuss it. So. I mean, I just.
And we may not be, we may not be able to this year either. But then again, we don't know.
Making an attempt to have the Tri-Fest. I mean, I've already registered, reserved a spot up there for the Lions Club. But I'll know by March something. Right. They'll call it off and send us our money back, you know, it's just that. So when is, I'm not sure, is Easter, is it like April or? I don't know when Easter is.
I don't.
I shut my phone off, so I. Actually, I got a calendar somewhere.
Aren't you a deacon at church?
April fourth, Ted.
April fourth, yes. I don't remember. I'm a data.
I'm gonna say if, if they have the Tri-Fest, it would be safe to have the Easter egg hunt.
Can't argue that, uh, you know, I'm. You know, I know that we've still got new covenants, got, you know, eggs and stuff like that. Just saying that the, the church of lights, churches haven't been meeting, so we, we haven't.
Right.
Yet at all to talk about it. But we can do it through the city and through, uh, I don't know, didn't you, Karen, were you involved in that truckers and helping hands? In the Easter egg hunt or not?
Yes.
I know the fire department was.
Fire department and Jay and I come down.
That's a good thing you brought that up. I hadn't even, it went through my mind.
Uh, he went today and picked up papers to file to get the. Fairgrounds for truckers helping hands for August, so.
Okay, that's.
I mean, we're going ahead and trying to plan positively for everything.
It's kind of, uh, the Lions Club, you know, that's our biggest fundraiser is a Tri-Fest and it really is hurting us and, uh. Okay, I agree. And yes, well, thank you, Rhonda, because I hadn't even thought about it.
Yeah, like I said, you know, we probably only meet two more times before Easter.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to. Plan it and, you know, of course, uh, when I, sitting here talking, I didn't look it up. April fourth is Sunday, so we would probably have it on the third or have it the weekend before.
I say March twenty-seventh. That'd be the Saturday before.
March twenty-seventh and then maybe April third for rain date.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
Did we? This is just a thought. Now, I've got a couple of bicycles over there to. Maintenance here. Now, they're not brand new. One of them looks nice. Though, maybe not. Did we, we don't have one up above the farm, did we? Did we buy any for last year?
What happened to the ones that the Masonic Lodge donated?
We give those out.
We gave those out.
Did we get some? Okay, I thought they had donated some more.
No, they donated two and then, uh, Lions Club, one of us. Lions Club or Church Alliance bought a third one.
Yeah, somebody bought a third one. I can't remember who it was.
Okay. All right, March the seventeenth, let me write that down.
I got about three percent left. If I die. Really dead, it's my phone, so.
Are you done? Good, well, I think, uh, you know, I'm through. Anybody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no, wait a minute. What date did you put down? The seventeenth?
The seventeenth and the third, what you said.
The twenty-seventh.
Oh, twenty-seventh? Oh, that's seventeen, that's St. Patrick's Day. I don't know what I had on my mind. All right, and April third.
Um, also, real quick, um. The Dollar Store is the fire department. I did a blanket drive or a throw drive for the fire department. Uh, I picked up a pretty good sized garbage bag and took them to the fire department the other night. I'm going to run that through the thirty-first of January and the first of February, I would like to start a stuffed animal drive. And Brian asked me who to thank and I told him, uh, Dollar General, City of Corden and Truckers Helping Hands. So, so you guys know if you want to put it on your Facebook page, but I want to do a stuffed animal drive and those will also go on the fire trucks. For if they have fire runs and I would like to give some to the ambulance services.
That's what those farming to snuggle with when they're riding, sleeping.
Big Brian.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Sounds good. Thank you. Good job. I actually, I remember when they put the box out for the blankets, but I hadn't been in the store in a while. And, uh, I didn't, last time I was in there, probably three or four weeks ago, so.
Uh, Brandon shared something on his Facebook page, so if you guys want to get on there, maybe share it on yours. Try to keep it, you know. Open and let everybody know about it. I'd appreciate it. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Shelly, just holler if there's anything you think you want. We'll try to get you some books and stuff to read. Not Shayla, Jayla. I've always done that. I wouldn't do it if you two were together, but I've always got the names mixed up.
I could be called worse.
Well, I said it a bunch, Linda said, Linda reminded me a bunch of times, it's Jayla.
Yeah, you could be called Jayla.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made and second to adjourn. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, Jayla, for joining in the, in the crowd.
Welcome back, Beth.
Do what?
I told Beth, welcome back.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Good to see you. Nathan hadn't seen you in a while. You teaching hard?
Uh, yeah, I didn't get in till about six, so yeah, it's been busy. Basketball started it up, so.
Okay, all in favor say a, I guess I didn't say that. All right, now we're adjourned, so any of y'all want to leave, I'm not going to kick you out. They're flying out of here.
Yeah, we'll see you later, Ted.
All right, Nathan. See you soon. All right, now you better, you better take over. Don't let me lose nothing.